Good evening. I'd like to call to order our regular school committee meeting for June 10th, 2015. Role call, we have Mr. Mullis and Mr. Bjork are not with us tonight. This is the ladies' night at the school committee. Our first item on the agenda would be our, let me see, consent agenda. Oh, sorry. First, we'll pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll go to the approval of minutes for May 27th, 2015, regular session. Approval of out-of-state overnight field trip to France and Italy, whoa, February 2016. The approval of Masbo Robotics Program grant, let me see, do we want to do that separately? Yes, we'll leave that. Warrants G416, R219, R220, R221, R222, L41, L42, and warrants CB10. Is that, no. You don't, nope. Skip the warrants CB10. Nope, that's okay, I couldn't remember on that one. All right, so that would be letters A, B, and D. We'll take a motion for those. No, we're going to skip the robotics for, no. Okay, Mrs. Bonish.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Second, Mrs. Burns. All those in favor, unanimous. Okay. The approval of the Masbo Robotics Program grant donation for $5,000. We'd like to be very thankful for that.
Five hundred, five thousand would be great.
All right. I'm going to get myself back in order here, sorry.
That's okay, I just wanted to give a little explanation. So, as I think you all know, I am just finishing up my term as president of the Mass Association of School Business Officials, and historically, they have given a gift to the president, usually in the form of a chair or a lamp or such, and I requested that rather than getting a lamp or a chair, which I have no room for anyway. I had asked if it would be possible for that donation to be made to Wilmington Public Schools in the form of a grant, and that we would open it up, if you will, to grant applications, and, which we did, we had some grant applications that were unfunded from some other grants. And so this grant, well specifically, $500, will go to Paul Monaco, and will be used to help offset the costs or provide scholarships to children enrolled in the summer robotics program that he's offering this year.
Excellent. Very nice. Okay, so Julie.
I'll make a motion. Move to accept the Masbo donation provided in the form of the robotics grant in the amount of $500.
Thank you. Second, Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor, unanimous, Kim. Payroll warrant 632015. Mrs. Bonish.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant 632015.
And second, Mrs. Rusad. All those in favor. Three in favor and two abstain, which would be Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. And then we have warrants CB10. Mrs. Rusad.
I'm the person to approve, warrant CB10.
Okay. Second, Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? Okay, one, two, three, four in favor and one, Mrs. Burns abstain. And then warrants sped 18 and sped 19. Mrs. Rusad.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants sped 18 and sped 19.
Okay. Mrs. Carroll, second. All those in favor? Okay, one, two, three, four in favor and one abstain, Mrs. Burns. Thank you, Kim. All right. We got to see our student representatives graduate this past weekend, and they did a nice job this year, and we really enjoyed having them. Looking forward to our student reps for next year. And they had big smiles on their faces when they went by. So, I'm sure they're going to be very happy where they end up going Emmanuel and University of Rhode Island, right? So, excellent. All right. So, no superintendent, no student representative report until next year. And so therefore, we'll go to the superintendents' report.
Thank you very much. I would like to start as a good segue just by congratulating Wilmington High School's class of 2015, but also congratulating Principal Linda Peters and her staff for an outstanding graduation ceremony. It was a really nice day, and certainly was facilitated by a nice day weather-wise as well. And so it was a great ceremony, I very much enjoyed, I'm sure you did as well. Ms. Peters' comments during the commencement address certainly shows, as we all know, her dedication to her students, and as she said, the school and these students are her life. And that certainly is the case. So, congratulations to her and her staff. I wanted to also, to note that the Washington DC trip for the grade eight students at Wilmington Middle School was a success despite some not great weather. I'm looking at Marissa Belleo, because she was on that trip, and, but I think a good time was had by all, correct?
Yeah, it was a good trip. Mine was the misty rain.
Yeah.
And the rain dealt all good.
So, yeah, they were supposed to go to a Washington Nationals game, which unfortunately got rained out, but I think the main purpose was to eat the hot dogs and popcorn, which they did get to do anyway.
If you had money, a hot dog and popcorn. And a bowl of it.
So that was a great trip, and all was safe and sound, and kids were very well behaved, no challenges there, so I think it was a successful trip. And finally, I just wanted to let the committee know that we did complete the administration of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey at both the middle school and the high school. The consultant has those resort, results and is analyzing those results, and there'll be a presentation to the committee sometime in the early part of the fall on those survey results provided by the consultant. And that's it for my report.
Okay, thank you. Old business, we have no old business tonight. New business, our new business is one of the bittersweet things that we do each year, and we're so happy to recognize our retirees for this year, but we're also, on the other hand, well, happy for them and sad for us, because Wilmington will be losing some wonderful teachers. So, what we'll do is we'll come sit up, we'll stand up here, and Mrs. Delai will bring them up one at a time, and we'll congratulate you.
Thank you. I too would just like to offer my thanks to, for the many years of service. In total, the nine retirees that are retiring this year have 148 years of service to Wilmington Public Schools and the children of Wilmington. And I guess because it is such an auspicious occasion, I'd just like to offer to all of the folks here the words of Maya Angelou, which is that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how much, how you made them feel. So, thank you for making our students feel safe, secure, confident, nurtured, and cared for in your time here in Wilmington Public Schools. So we have with us today four of the nine retiring staff, and let's start with Lynn Martell. And Lynn is a Wildwood Educational, Wildwood Early Childhood Center Educational Assistant, and has been here offering us 21 years of service at Wilmington Public Schools, so congratulations, Lynn.
It's like the final walk here. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You have to shave all of that. So, I don't passage, and we only retire. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Congratulations. Enjoy. Thank you so much.
And next we have Mary Mahoney. Mary Mahoney, who has been with us for 15 years, has served as both a middle school and a high school speech and language pathologist, so congratulations to Mary.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you all so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
And we next have Joan Murphy, and Joan is a middle school special education teacher. She has nine years of service to Wilmington Public Schools, but also served as a middle school educational assistant and a long-term sub for Wilmington Public Schools. Congratulations to Joan.
Oh, thank you.
And finally, for the folks here today, we have Cynthia Dench-Irish, who is a middle school foreign language teacher, who has served in that role for 11 years. Thank you, Cynthia, congratulations.
She's someone's good. Thank you. Sorry, I got a little nervous.
Congratulations, thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you. My favorite words for people are, you don't have to stay the whole night, you're going to be a whore.
While you're sitting, I also acknowledge the retirees that we have that were not able to join us tonight, which includes Paula Byrne, who is our high school library and media specialist for 18 years. Miss Rita King, who was our middle school nurse for 28 years, who's also a nurse at the high school and at the North Intermediate School. So, our retiree with the longest amount of service here is Miss Rita King. We have Joanne Russo, who is, was the North Intermediate Food Services Manager, 21 years of service to Wilmington Public Schools. She also served at the Wildwood School and the middle school as well. We have Patricia Tobin, who was a high school educational assistant, 14 years of service to Wilmington Public Schools. She also served as an educational assistant at the Shawshine School. And finally, Kimberly Ritchie, who most recently was a high school educational assistant, 11 years of service to Wilmington Public School, also served at the Wildwood and the Woburn Street School as an educational assistant.
Thank you. Give them a little clap. Thank you. All right. Our next order of business is the spring athletic wrap-up.
Good evening, everyone. When I was here last time discussing the fall in winter, I wasn't sure if we were going to actually have a spring season. Had to postpone over 40 games.
Wow.
But we actually made it through it, and I'll be perfectly honest, that once we got underway, we really didn't have a rainout. Once we got going, it was actually a pretty good spring, but it took us a while to get going. So, with that, baseball finished second in the Middlesex League Freedom Division, and we made it to the state tournament and lost to Belmont. Middlesex League All-Stars were James Hill, Jackson Gillis, and Graham Smith. Softball also made the state tournament this year, but we lost to Wellington in the first round. Middlesex League All-Stars in softball were Jen DeVideo and Shannon Horgan. Girls' track, Middlesex League All-Stars were Brianna Tavarez in the shot put, Elizabeth Olson in the mile, Julia Gaik in the 400, Amber Peach in the 100-yard hurdles, Shabon Turner in the 100 meters dash. And we had Amber Peach at the All States, she made it to the All States and broke our school record in the 400-meter hurdles with a time of 69.46 seconds. So, it was a good, you know, like I said, been around for a while, so it was a good job by Amber. The boys' track, Middlesex League All-Stars were Connor Bennett in the discus, Steve Leighton in javelin, Chris Mayenser in the two-mile, Nathan Vince in the triple jump, Joe Gaudreau in the 200 meters, Evan Spillanger in the 100 meters. And at the, we had three guys going to the All States, Connor Bennett in the discus, Joe Gaudreau in the 200 meter, and Steve Leighton in the javelin. And our boys' tennis team made the state tournament the first time since 2002, so it's been quite a while. And we lost to Gloucester 3 to 2 in the first round, and we had a Middlesex League All-Star, Robert Mealy.
We won't tell you that there's a person from Gloucester in this room, the winner. Someone won.
Also, we did have our athletic banquet last week, and we gave out major awards. We have the Ding Driscoll Award. A few of the, you know, people my age who remember Ding Driscoll. He was an assistant principal here at the high school, you know, for many years, and he was a coach. But we give out an award in his name for the student athlete with the most dedication to sports, and our two recipients were Amber Peach and Evan Rafi. Lawrence Cushion Award, named after the first A.D., is given to a senior demonstrating sportsmanship, scholarship, and athletic ability, and we had Nicole McInerney and Ryan Horgan as our recipients. The Dr. Gerald Fagan Award, which is given out to the most outstanding Wilmington High School athlete, went to Lauren Fitch and Connor Bennett. And we also give an award, it's called the Wildcat Distinguished Service Award, given to a community member for their contribution and service to our program. And this year's award went to the Furlong family, which Terry obviously works with us, the wife, husband Mike, and Matt, Sean, Alex, and Melissa. They were always involved, mainly with wrestling, but also with football and lacrosse, and just volunteered a ton of their time, they were always there for us. So, it was, it was a good night. Good night. Those are our major awards. And while I have everybody here, I would like to bring up, this is my last, one of my last pushes for our summer sports clinics, which will be starting on the 22nd. We get out the 19th on Friday, and on Monday morning, we'll be starting summer camp. Right now, we have 227 youngsters signed up, so we've got a good, a good push right off the bat. We'll be going, we have roughly 10 camps, we're going right till the beginning of August.
Excellent. During the summer, if someone finds that they're, they have that week after all, are people able to sign up as, over the course of summer?
Yes. We, you know, try not to get it out there too much, but because I'd like to see what we're going to have ahead of time, because that's how we, we bring on the high school kids. I mean, high school kids, some of them will be paid, quite a few of them want volunteer. They want their, you know, community service time and whatnot. So we have to kind of know how many people to bring in. But we do, we take, you know, we take registrations, you know, at the door. The only program that, you know, kind of tends to get a little large is the boys' basketball. And I think that's because that's been going for 20 years, it's been going the longest, you know, but the other ones are, have been picking up, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone have any questions, Thomas?
Yes.
I'd like to congratulate everybody and all the All-Stars for all their dedication and hard work, and thanks.
No, thank you.
I think it's nice that there are so many awards that different people, we have many awards go around, and that it's different students who get those awards and the same person doesn't get everything.
Right.
Although that would be a big coup for us if that happened, I guess. We could have a TV show. But I think that we really, every year it shows that we have some really excellent athletes, and it's all year long, and it's their parents moving them up.
Right.
With the, and our wonderful coaches who attract the kids because of their reputations. So I say thank you to the people involved in your programs.
Thank you.
I think, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate Mr. Harrison.
Thank you.
Okay. Here we go. Our next order of business is Special Education Inclusion Program findings.
Yes, we're going to ask Mary Hood to come and give this presentation to you. Mary, as you know, is our administrator of special education, and just by way of background, and she may emphasize this as well, we actually were fortunate to contract with Dr. Margaret Reed, who is a longtime special education, special educator and special education administrator, and was able to come in and evaluate our inclusion program here in Wilmington Public Schools and provide us with some great information, most particularly, I think most importantly, and where our, we'll probably focus most of our time is on her recommendations moving forward, so, Mary.
Nice introduction, some of which I was going to say, she did a very in-depth evaluation of the program. She, she met with multiple teachers in every building, she observed in multiple classrooms in every building, she did parent surveys, teacher surveys, and she actually reviewed close to 300 IEPs. So I feel like she really took the time and looked in-depth at this program, which is what we had asked her to do, and came up with a lot of information, which I have squished down into her strengths. We'll start with that, that's my favorite section, is the strengths. Basically, she said that on the surveys, teachers identified that working in teams is a strength of the program. When speaking to me, she was very impressed with how hard the teachers in this district, both general ed and special ed, how committed they were to students, and she said the absolute biggest strength of the program is that everyone wants kids to succeed, and she was really impressed by that. So her surveys, you know, the teachers agreed with that, that they were hardworking and that they worked together as teams. Parent surveys indicated a high level of satisfaction with the special education services in the district, with 36% being very satisfied and 49% saying they were satisfied. Another one that I absolutely love is that 95% of parents indicated there was open communication between them and their child's team. Parents are part of the IEP team for special education students, and it is critical for the success of students that they understand what's going on in schools and that we share and communicate with them, so I was really pleased to see that we're doing that quite successfully. 87% of parents report that staff and administration have earned their trust, so again, in the same vein, they trust what we're telling them, and I think that's indicative of teams are actually working together to write IEPs and implement plans for students, so that was very positive. In terms of compliance with special ed regulations, she went through so many IEPs, and she said that she clearly documented the goals were well-written with condition, target, behavior, and criteria as advised by Department of Ed. And just for full disclosure, she did a workshop on how to write goals, I think, three years ago, with some of the special education staff one summer, so apparently that was a good workshop, and it's been retained, and we're in good shape in terms of writing goals. So, the results and the suggestions in terms of areas for us to move forward from, the biggest, most important task that she has given us is to formulate, identify an inclusion model and implement it across all schools in the district. She would like to see us form a committee under the guidance of an outside consultant who has a specialty in inclusion practices. There's a lot of models, there's a lot of definitions, so it's pretty important that the person, that this committee have someone who's very knowledgeable about all aspects of inclusion. It's done differently in different districts, and really, there's some decisions to be made in looking at an overall model, so she felt that was an important piece for us to have. She felt that the training that staff need, she did give us some suggestions that we'll talk about in a minute for professional development, but she felt that training in a chosen model was very important and that it needed to include everyone, general education teachers, staff, special education teachers, and paraprofessionals, that everyone needed the same training to share common language around the model and a common belief in what we're doing. She felt that there should be a building-by-building review of the obligations expected by all staff members working in partnership. So, what she's talking about here is, is role identification, who does what, if there's two teachers in a classroom, who's responsible for what? And really defining that and breaking it down, and what's the difference between what a special education teacher might do in a general education class versus what a paraprofessional might do in a special education class? So really breaking down the roles, there was not a shared definition, and it varied a little bit by schools and it varied a little bit by classrooms, so she really felt that we need to take a look at, at that piece, so that everyone has a clear understanding of what their role in that team piece is. Inclusion requires planning. She gave us a definition of what that means, because she said, "Planning is team members sitting together with materials and content options available, creating methods for combining and reinforcing the skills." What it's not is on-the-fly, or emails, or conversations at 11 o'clock at night from their houses," and that's what she heard a lot was happening, is that teachers were, you know, trying to share information, but there was no designated time for, for them to do that. So she, you know, really found that to be an area that we need to look at. This is my favorite. Staff need to be provided with onsite consultation targeting useful yet research-based data collection. The manner in which each special education teacher collects the data on how the student is progressing on their goals is very individual, everyone does it differently. And she really felt that a model and a shared way to collect the data in alignment with how the goals are written would be helpful. So that's, that's one, and that will require some training, because that's done very differently by each individual. It's really not a huge piece of training for special education teachers in college, that's not a huge focus, so a lot of teachers kind of learn that as they go, and I think that, that she, it would be valuable to have that looked at and clearly defined. And she did pick one area on the IEP that she felt we needed to improve, and that is a section called specially-designed instruction. It's actually a question on the IEP that says what specially-designed instruction will be implemented, and there is probably hundreds of things that we're doing, and there would be one or two in each of those sections, so she really felt that needed to be expanded so that everyone has a clear understanding of what is happening, what is the specially-designed instruction that is happening with students. Those were the big suggestions that she would like us to, you know, take on for a task, and she did pick some very specific professional development activities that she would like to see. The first one was a clarification of general and special education roles and responsibilities, which we already mentioned as one of her suggestions. Team or co-teaching practices, so really, what does that look like? Inclusion models for adaptations in classrooms, so there's very different models out there, and the committee would need to choose one, and then we would need to train everyone in what the model is, as well as what the co-teaching practices are. They're not the same thing, the model is the structure in which this happens, the co-teaching is what it looks like in the classroom. She would like to see us have everyone do some PD in differentiating instruction, and specifically, universal design for learning. So she would like us to see not just common planning time for special education and general education teachers to plan together, but actually to have everyone trained in the same model. And I think that would really support some of our special education teachers who work with multiple classroom teachers. If everyone's designing the lesson plans in the same way to meet the needs of all students, it's much easier for that special educator to be going into classes and working with teachers who do design lessons in the same way. And the other one was training in, in the practices and policies of the district. The procedural manual in special ed is a six-inch binder, and they're at every school, and all of the special education teachers have access to it, but it's a pretty daunting task when you work a very long, hard day to go look up a question. So questions tend to be answered more by asking a coworker or a team chairperson than by referral to our manual, and she felt that it would really help if everyone had a review workshop on the actual procedures that Wilmington has chosen to write as our procedural manual for how we're going to implement the regulations from the state. So those are the key points of a very large report with, where we go from here to look at a plan for moving forward, and I'm really excited to get going on. to get going on it. I think Ms. Delai knows that I'm very excited, so I can't wait till we can take some of this on.
Just to follow up, I think as Dr. Reed recommended, one of the first steps that would make sense for us to take as a community, as a school community, is to put together some type of inclusion committee, inclusion task force, that's cross-functional across the school community, and to begin to be thoughtful about the findings of the report and the suggestion, suggestions for where we, how we proceed. But, really importantly, is this isn't something that's going to happen overnight. It's not gonna happen in a year's time. It's gonna require, obviously, resources. It's gonna require time. And we have many things, obviously, on our, on our plates. This one, obviously, being one of the highest priorities. I think, you know, Mary and I share that, that belief that this is a high priority. So, putting together a task force of folks who can thoughtfully plan out what this looks like in terms of implementing and strengthening our inclusion program over the next three, four, or five years. So, that will be one of our first steps. She did advise that we perhaps consider having it facilitated at some level by a consultant. Mary and I will have, actually, we're actually meeting with a consultant tomorrow, so we've begun to sort of shake the tree and see who's out there for consultants and what type of services they offer, so that we can thoughtfully choose somebody who can guide us through this and guide the work of such a task force. So, you'll hear more about this. It's not something we're gonna run out and pull together tomorrow. We wanna kind of understand first what the role of a task force. We're aware of some communities, for example, in Boston Public Schools, they went the route of creating an inclusion task force as part of their planning of implementing full inclusion in their schools. So, there are some models out there. There are some folks we can talk to about what, what lessons they learned from this process of putting together a task force. Give us some guidance, make some decisions around, you know, what do we want as the outcomes, choose a consultant, and then put together a team. That's all things that we hope to do within the next probably several months, so that beginning next year, we can begin to convene that group and begin to put together a plan of attack, if you will, implementation plan.
Just two very quick questions. First, Dr. Reed, who is she, is she independent or is she affiliated with a specific company or organization?
She's independent.
Okay.
She does do workshops for different agencies. She does a lot of workshops for Edco. She does do a lot of work for the Department of Ed in different consulting models, different consulting pieces for them.
Okay. I was just curious as to where she hails from. And the second question is with regards to, so, I understand, then, you're gonna seek out a consultant first, and then once you filter that piece out, then are you gonna get, set the committee up to go over what type of inclusion, sorry, what type of the, the, models, thank you, that we would consider? I'm not sure. I know there are a variety of different models out there. I didn't know if, if we would go with one inclusion model, or would, would there be possible two that we would, I mean, I don't know. I'm not as familiar.
I think that's exactly what the committee's gonna look like. I, I think that the task will be, given what we know about Wilmington, given our school breakdowns, given the size of our classrooms, given the amount of staff that we currently have, what's the best model for Wilmington? Will be kind of an overarching question for them to look at, and whether they determine that the model might vary slightly from elementary to secondary, or whether it would look exactly the same. That will be part of, like Mary said, analyzing some of the lessons learned from other district, as well as what this committee decides.
Would you also appoint a, a parent as suggested to this task force?
Our intent is, yes, to include some parent input, absolutely. I think that it's more than just about, say, choosing sort of the model or the best practices. Part of this rollout, as, as Dr. Reed's report has highlighted, comes with, you know, policies, and are our policies up to date? And that don't necessarily even mean school committee policies, but just sort of our administrative policies. Are our procedures up to date? Do we have the roles of folks defined very well when it comes to inclusion? And have we provided the necessary, first of all, professional development to our staff, so that they, as Mary pointed out, have a common vocabulary around inclusion? And have we provided them the supports, the materials, the resources, and other supports that they need to be able to success, successfully implement inclusion in the district? So, it's gonna be, it's going to be a multi-layered, multifaceted plan. There'll be PD that'll occur staged over several years. We'll have to decide, what do we do first? Who do we train first? How do we pace this out? How do we, you know, our scope and sequence for implementing professional development, our scope and sequence for addressing some of the recommendations that were here in the report.
Can I ask one last question? In the meantime, with some of the findings you found, especially with the communication with the special education educators, and just being able to communicate, I think, in some cases, I mean, there's a consistency where some really mesh well, and there's somewhere there's a gap because of lack of planning time. Are you going to address that, sort of like, for the lack of a better term, forgive me, like a patch it until we can get this rolling? And how are you gonna attack the more media concern to try to, to better, at least get that communication process started? I know you've taken steps proactively thus far.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. We've begun to have conversations with our district leadership team. They have reviewed the report findings and recommendations in detail. We've had a lengthy discussion about that. We, I think, all acknowledge that we're not gonna sort of stop doing what we're doing or put this on hold. I think what the real conversation has been around, how do we leverage what we're currently doing? And I'll use as an example, we're implementing the Envisions Math Program next year. Both special education staff and regular education staff are being trained in Envisions. And I have a pretty clear sense, and if it's not happening, we'll ensure that that happens, that when they receive Envisions training, that there will also be, part of the professional development will be not just on delivering the program, the content, but also on how to differentiate it. So, where that is already happening, we'll be able to leverage that to begin to use that professional development. It covers more than one thing, so it'll, it'll cover that as well. You know, there's certainly also a lot of conversation happening around schedules and time. And time is a challenge. Time is a challenge that all school districts, all schools across the country face, is how to create that common planning time, that co-planning time. It can't be, inclusion can't work when it's on the fly. And in some ways, the planning piece of it is, is probably more important than even the, the delivery piece. The universal design is designing lesson plans. That's happening in the planning phase of it, and then you're delivering that. So, we do have to figure out how to, how to do that, so how to create more time for that to happen for staff.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Reed.
Any other questions or comments? I think you hit on to everything, especially the time. No, it's fine. Wait a minute, I was gonna ask that.
I'm sorry.
No, that is totally fine, because it just shows we're on the same, I think we're on the same wavelength here. And for me, the, the secondary level, I was involved in this at one point in my teaching career, and honest to goodness, they would not put our, they would not do our schedules back-to-back or at the same times. It was so frustrating as a teacher. You just couldn't do what you had to do. And so, for me, I think we know that's an issue. Any that we could take care of at that, for next year, I think I would encourage us to try and get as much time for the people as possible. And the idea of the professional development going for all the teachers, it's not just the special ed teachers. It's, it's a, a community work in hand. And so, I think that's really important to do that. And I think, I, I agree with you, Ms. Reed. It's like, it's a good opportunity. We have a chance to really clean the slates here and work forward, and everybody wants to do that. And I really think it'll be successful, because with Mary, I love that she takes her time and thinks back about it, and then starts a little at a time. It can't be done in one year. It can't. And so, with having a three-year plan or whatever years you come up with, you're working towards it all the time. You get one area down pat, and then you just go on to the next one. I think that's a great way to do it, very responsible way to do it. So, thank you. We appreciate this, and we're so glad that we had this done for the school system. Okay, our next item of business is the behavioral health presentation.
Mary, do you wanna stay for this part? So, we have, we have several members of the Behavioral Health Task Force here with us this evening, and I just wanna acknowledge them before we jump in. Obviously, Mary Hood is here, is our administrator of special education. We also have Laura Stinson, who is our K-12 PE health liaison, as well as being a health educator, a PE educator at the Woburn Street School. We have, over here in this row here, we've got Deb Horning, who is the school adjustment counselor at Wilmington Middle School. We've got Marissa Bellio, who is a school psychologist at Wilmington Middle School. Bethany Dionne, who is a school psychologist at the West Intermediate, and Kelly Sullivan, who is a special education teacher at the West Intermediate School. And I think what I'd like to start off by saying is just how grateful I am to this committee, which you can see in this next slide, how many people have been involved in this effort this year, who have generously given of their time to be part of this task force. So, I, I thank them for their passion and commitment. I, I share, as they know, I share their passion about this topic. This all started with a presentation that we all heard in back at the November CIT Day from a former colleague of mine, actually, running public schools, who is their, their behavioral health coordinator, who's done a lot of work in that district around behavioral health. And I would say seven or eight folks almost tackled me after the presentation, saying, "How can we begin to do this work here in Wilmington Public Schools?" And obviously, I have had the, the fortune of being able to see its impact in my former district, so I was very passionate to do this work here. So, we're very lucky to have this commitment. And you can see here, I won't read all the names of the folks here, but what I would point out to you is the fact that it's incredibly diverse group of folks. We have folks from just about every single school. We have folks from every single discipline, whether it be general ed teachers and specialists, special education teachers, school psych, nurses, director of nursing involved, obviously, Mary and myself, social workers. So, we have a very diverse group, and I think that's really helped us as we started to think through our work together. So, I wanna talk a little bit about what we did. I also acknowledge that when we were, the commitment of the school committee as well, because when we were developing our district improvement plan for this year, you all were very supportive and passionate as well, and added a behavioral health goal to our district improvement plan, which certainly lends, lends credence and support to the work that we have been doing this year. So, to date, and actually, Bethany, you wanna come and join Mary, because she's gonna talk to us a little bit about one of the slides as well. Our progress to date, we have met, as you can see from the slide here, we've met six times, and we're actually gonna meet a seventh time on June 19th, which, yes, is after the end of the school year. But, we are going to meet as a group for half a day to do some planning. But, we've met so far six times. What we did initially, we started off, actually, our work by just kind of brainstorming. We did an exercise on visioning, on what we would like to see as the vision of this group. And we broke up then into several work groups. We created a group that worked on our, the mission, vision, and beliefs for this group. We had a group that was working on professional development, including parent education, and a group that was working on implementing or administering the behavioral health self-assessment, which is a tool that's available through the DESE that was developed several years ago by a statewide task force. And the, the role of the self-assessment is actually to help districts understand where they are in this process. So, our next slide, and I think Deb, you, you and some of your colleagues were on the subgroup that developed this, so I thank them for this. So, again, I won't read through all of it. There's a definition there of behavioral health, which we thought was really important. Behavioral health to some is somewhat of a nebulous term, so we wanted to be very clear and specific about what we were referring to in behavioral health. So, that I will read. Basically, it's an interdisciplinary approach that promotes the well-being and supports an individual's ability to deal with challenges in everyday life. So, we talk about social health, emotional health, mental health. All of that is encompassed within this term behavioral health. So, we've got a vision and a mission, and we've got a set of beliefs that we have in place for the task force, which I think is helpful to defining who we are and what we're looking to do. So, then we had a professional development and parent education committee, and I'm gonna actually ask Bethany to talk about the work of that group.
Sure. So, we've been lucky enough to have a couple of conversations with Dr. Ross Green to see if we can incorporate some of his model, the collaborative and proactive solutions formerly known as collaborative problem-solving approach. And we just met with him in person, actually, last week, and had a great conversation with him, looking into whether or not this is something that we can pilot in some schools with small groups of staff members to have people, to begin training people in the CPS approach. And so, we're pretty excited to look into that and see if that's something that we can move forward with. We also would love to be able to offer parent workshops on CPS strategies. Dr. Green is, has done a lot of work with schools and family education as well. So, he's written a couple of books. One of them is, they're on the slide, Lost at School. That's his most recent one. And so, we are, I think we're really lucky to be able to have these conversations with him and potentially work with him. And I'm pretty excited to, to see where we can go with that. So, yeah, that's.
So, there's a possibility we're looking at and evaluating whether or not we wanna pilot this at some of our schools. I know that the West, in particular, is very enthusiastic about the potential to do that, and so, we are investigating that, have a, having conversations about that. The, what, what I really love about the CPS model is that the, you know, Dr. Green defines challenging behaviors as something to address, not through interventions, but he addresses it as lagging skills. So, if a child has behavior challenges, they're lagging in skills. And so, this is really about developing the skills for students, for children, to work through the problems that are causing those behaviors. And so, it's a very unique approach. There's a lot of research, it is a research-based approach. There's a lot of research been done on it. It seems very successful. And so, before we roll it out and say that Wilmington Public Schools is a CPS district, we think it would be wise to at least pilot it. And we're fortunate to have a school like the West that's very enthusiastic. I know there is a couple of other schools, middle schools, talked about it as well. Obviously, the middle school's got a lot on its plate this year with a new schedule and a new principal. So, we'll kind of evaluate, but I am looking forward to the possibility of piloting it, certainly in at least one of our schools, for sure. So, I also should say that Bethany applied for and received a WEF grant, an educator explorer WEF grant this year, that will allow her to go to a week-long institute that is put on by Dr. Ross and his organization specifically in this.
What's the balance? Is that the organization?
Yes, that's his, his website that he, it's a fantastic website, if anybody's looking for more information about what exactly the CPS model is. But, as Mary said, it, it really focuses on solving, looking at unsolved problems with children, and working as a team with, with the children to determine the lagging skills, and then provide supports to address those lagging skills. His, Dr. Green's tagline really is, "Kids will do well if they can." So, if they're not doing well, what, what is it that they're, what's the skill that they're lagging?
So, if the WEF were supporting Bethany in that effort, it's certainly going to be a benefit to, to, not only to the West, but to our district and the task force specifically as well. And the last subgroup, there was also a subgroup, I should say, a working group that consists of Mary, myself, and Doreen Crowe. We are, we consider ourselves to be the, sort of the leadership liaison. So, we are the liaison to leadership, be it the school committee or the district leadership team, to be able to keep them apprised of the efforts of the behavioral health task force, bring them up to speed, and solicit their support for the work that, that we're doing and bringing that work into the schools. So, the behavioral health self-assessment, as I mentioned, it's a tool that was developed by DESE, and it's really to assess where schools are at in addressing and supporting students' behavioral health needs. There are several different domains that it looks at, everything from leadership and professional professional development to access to resources, actually, six or seven different domains. So basically, each school put together a cross-functional team that included general ed, special ed, school nurse, school psych, administrator. They put together a team, and those teams met during the last week into the early weeks of June. Every school had a team that met, and they literally gathered around a computer together with the computer projected, not unlike this, and they went through the self-assessment and answered all of the questions, of which there were many, in the self-assessment for each of the schools. We now have that data, we're tabulating that data for each school, and on the 19th we will meet, and we will look at that data, and that will help us to assess what the priorities are and to start to plan out, again, as with our inclusion efforts, to plan out over the next several years, what should be our top priorities and what should be the pacing for implementing those things at Wilmington Public Schools. In terms of next steps, so we're going to review the results of the Behavioral Health Self-Assessment for each school on June 19th. We're going to look for common themes as a basis for developing district-wide goals, and then we'll look at individual school challenges to identify individual school challenges. And the goal will really be that next year, as part of our improvement planning processes, both district and school improvement, that each school and the district will have a behavioral health goal based on the results of the self-assessment and the planning that we do. And we also, as I mentioned, hope to pilot the CPS model. I just wanted to note as well, because you may hear us begin to evolve our language from behavioral health to safe and supportive schools. DESE has done a lot of work, there's been, obviously, there's been legislation that was passed this year that was actually a piece of the gun violence bill to create more supports around safe and supportive schools. So the language is now evolving away from just behavioral health to safe and supportive schools, which actually is even more encompassing than behavioral health. It includes school nutrition and school wellness and school safety and other areas, school climate, school culture. So you may see us evolve, you may see us look over time at perhaps combining or at least creating the structure for collaboration between some of the existing committees that we have, like the School Wellness Advisory Council, like the School Climate and Culture, even potentially school safety, that we will begin to build structures for collaboration and maybe consolidate, so that the folks that are working, instead of having to go to three different meetings, Mary, I know, Laura, you go to several, would be going to one meeting, and the work of the group of the Safe and Supportive Schools Initiative or the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee would be to focus on all aspects of safe and supportive schools. And this is the way that the department has, is evolving as well. There is, there has been historically funding to provide grants to districts that are doing this work. It's been on the chopping block. I know that Mrs. Burns and I have both been advocating to try and get that funding restored. I know we just recently had a conversation with Senator Tar, who made an amendment to add $500,000. We were looking for $750,000. Personally, I was looking for 1.5 million, but we're working hard to get the support of the legislature to maintain that funding, so that those grants and that technical assistance is still available to school districts.
Any questions?
CPS, I got the right acronym, right? Do we know of any other local districts that have implemented this successfully?
There are a lot of districts, local districts, that have implemented it. On his website, he has, he has a list of them and a number of testimonials from those schools as well. I don't know any off the top of my head, but he, I don't know if he still is, but he was a adjunct professor at Tufts for a while, so he worked with a lot of schools in the area.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, Mrs. Burns, do you want to ask?
No, I have one question, I know you won't ask it.
Okay. I just have to say, I can't, if you haven't seen me fidget in my seat for the past 10 minutes, I'm a huge fan of Ross Green, and I'm very familiar with him for several years, reading His Explosive Child, which was his first book prior to Lost at School. And I think, in Finding a Guide for My Own Children, I think what I got back from it, it makes sense. It's a common sense approach, and as opposed to being reactive to it, breaking down the skill process and building that piece, I think it just makes sense. And I know in his approach and being familiar with the book, that he started off with one particular school in that book, that you build the trainers and then they expand. I strongly, I would strongly love to see this program introduced, because I think it'll impact not only the behavioral piece, but it'll flare off like an octopus to the other aspects that we are dealing with, especially in the safe and supportive school realm, in a larger view. And I just, I've seen him several times in his workshops, and I know we actually currently have teachers in the district who also are Ross Green prescribers, who actually implement the CPS approach in their classrooms. I think, I would love to see, and I understand and very much respect the transitions that the middle school is going under, but I think seeing it in a, you know, at the secondary level, in the middle school and the high school, because all three impact a child's development process so differently, that I think having trainers in those three areas to maybe also introduce it eventually into the Wilmington University to expand upon and, and that consistent approach. Because I do know it's, and one thing that hasn't touched upon, it's very difficult to start implementing, but once it's implemented, the cost and the time savings and losing teaching time, learning time, it's a huge savings on the backend, and I can't thank you enough for bringing that. And he's, he is so funny, I have to tell you, just this engaging process that he has, it's awesome. I'm very excited about that, and thank you for bringing him in.
Well, the great to speak on the, kind of, having the trainers in the schools. If we were to pilot it with him, it's a 20-week training process for the pilot group, and he said from that point, those staff members would then be able to begin training other staff members, and that that's the goal, that he's, he's not in it to try and get as many people that he can train personally to get the money, and it's, no, he wants to train a small group, and then you go off and do it yourself, and he's huge.
Personally, I don't think he has the time, because he's internationally speaking.
Yeah.
And I know that, I actually, initially, when I was on the CPAC, I inquired, because hopefully, you know, we're hoping to get him, bring him in as a part of a workshop for parents as well. I have, I've spoken, again, I don't remember, it was in Massachusetts, some districts who successfully implemented it. And Ray Vaughn, I spoke to some of the nursing staff in those districts that were nice enough to kind of call back when I was inquiring, and, I mean, it's, it's a longstanding, it's well worth it, the investment, so I want to thank you for exploring that opportunity.
And I think because the Behavioral Health Task Force is fairly nascent, I think we didn't want, we haven't necessarily engaged in extensive exhaustive research on all the different behavioral models that are out there. So I think that we do owe it to ourselves to at least have that discussion and dialogue, but at the same time, that doesn't mean we can't pilot this in one district, and, I mean, one school, and if there are other models that we want to go either look at in other school districts, we can certainly do that research. But the combination of looking at other models, doing some more research, and having a pilot of a model in our district should give us enough information that we can say, yeah, we really do believe in this, and it's well worth the cost. And to Bethany's point, I love the, so many of the things that you do out there, so many of the things that are out there, like an open circle, responsive classroom, it's a lot of money to train people, and there are strict rules in place about you can't then go and train, whereas, you know, Dr. Green is very clear, "I'm not here to plant myself in Wilmington Public Schools for the rest of my life. I'm here to get a group, a cadre, and people trained, so they then become the coaches for everybody else," and that speaks volumes to me.
I think they have support, too, in that sometimes people, whether it be refresher courses, I think his organization also lends that aspect if needed, which is nice to have a little safety net if something goes awry and can't get back on track, so that is a.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You look like you were all.
I'd just like to ask, you didn't ask this, if Mr. Joe would have money in the budget for us to have a copy of, the school committee, to have a copy of one of the books.
A book?
Of the book.
You do have my Lost, Lost in School.
Both of them are fantastic. But, yeah, Lost in School and Explosive Child. So Lost in School is the more recent one, and that focuses more on the CPS approach than Explosive Child does, but they're both fantastic.
That could be our summer reading, and it would give us some background.
It's taking that explosive trial piece.
Yes.
And really incorporating in what it looks like in a school environment, which I think is, is huge. And I have a copy, if you haven't talked with you, but if anybody wants to borrow in the meantime.
I'm sure a library has it.
I hope the rest of the school community doesn't mind me giving them summer reading. But it sounds like it's something we would need to know for, to have a foundation before next year. I think it would be good for us.
Absolutely, yeah. And we did talk about the fact that, you know, if we're successful in finding the funding, I should, I should acknowledge that it is $4,000 per school. So if we pilot it, one school will cost us $4,000. So just like you asked Mr. Riggio if there's money for books, I asked for a little more money than that. And so, but we would want to do a parent education piece at the beginning of the year, because as part of the coaching, the coaching involves the volunteers who are involved, the teachers that are involved in actually using these strategies with children, and we certainly want parents to understand what it is that we're going to be using and doing with students, if you will, before we launch into that. So we intend to do a parent education piece on that.
Definitely. Could we, we have some members of the CPAC with us right now, and hopefully, they could play a pivotal role at that point. They could be in with the parent as liaisons to.
Yeah, when we talked about parent involvement, you know, to Mary's credit, obviously, she identified that that's a natural connection to make for parent involvement, is folks who are part of the CPAC. So I could, I could envision that we might have a special education parent, but potentially also a regular education parent as well as part of that, so I don't know.
Right, if Mrs. Burns had indicated, this was something that CPAC had brought to the district several years ago, Mrs. Burns and our previous coach here had really tried to get this implemented, so we'd be happy to.
Did you guys want to?
No, I agree.
I just wanted to make sure, our Behavioral Health Task Force members, did you want to?
I think it'd be a great opportunity to really expand the conversation around kind of positive mental health and what it looks like and how it's not something that happens in the guidance house or school psychology office, that it can happen in the classrooms, kind of, with every student, and really focus on that preventative skill development. I think it's a great concept, though.
Very exciting. Sounds wonderful. You'd think it was the beginning of the year instead of the end of the year. We have so many things to look forward to next year. It's wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, our last item here under the business is the SEEM Collaborative Quarterly Report.
Yes, as you know, as part of the collaborative regulations, the collaborative that we belong to, which is the SEEM Collaborative, is required to provide to us and for me to provide to you as a representative to the SEEM Collaborative with the quarterly report, and typically that is, we provide you with the executive director's report. So I attended a meeting on June 2nd, it was the last meeting of this year, and here is the executive director's report. I should say, they also did approve an FY16 budget, and that will be an item on our next agenda on the 24th to share with you per the regulations, the collaborative regulations, not for a vote, but just to share with you the FY16 budget for the SEEM Collaborative.
Okay, excellent. The next, oh, did anyone have any comments on that? No? Excellent. Let me look here. Okay, public comments. No public comments, thank you. Other reports, this is where we could, does anyone have any comments?
I just want to, as Superintendent Delai had touched upon, we had a lovely but brief meeting with Senator Tar, and I went on to my visiting at the State House, so I dropped in at Representative Micali's office, and was fortunate that he was in the office, so I bent his ear for about 30 minutes, just reiterating funding requests and the upcoming, just bringing to light upcoming park pieces in that forum, which will be taking place at the North Shore Community College, the Ling Campus on this Monday, where the Board of Education, Commissioner Chester, will be hearing testimony with regards to the park testing this past spring. Twenty seconds. Oh, 22nd, forgive me, thank you. I'm sorry, I apologize. I also wanted to bring to your attention that tomorrow, the Joint Committee on Education is meeting, there's a bunch of bills before them, dealing with park and high-risk testing, amongst more technology piece, more clarification to existing bills, and just asking for some clarification changes. But I have the link in the web, the link to the bills that are being proposed, and some of it dealing with students with disabilities and MCAS testing. MCAS being a graduation requirement, you know, putting that bill to, proposing to take that off the table and allow districts that authority to issue diplomas upon students who have met the requirements, as opposed to having it come through a state assessment task, testing. So I do have the link, they're meeting from 10 to 1 tomorrow, I won't be able to attend as I'd like, but I'm going to have my feelers out there to listen, and, but it may be of some interest, especially if anybody is planning on attending the second-to-last forum being held on the 22nd. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to forward that on if you have any interest, just to see what's being spoke, talked about, because this could directly impact, you know, the next state assessment and, and just what's going on with regards to MCAS. It's a bit of a wishy-washy process right now in the transition of pushing park and dealing with the MCAS piece, with hopes that it'll, I think, roll itself over, but I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, so.
Thank you. She did a lot of work on that list, too. It was excellent. One of the things, I had, I asked Mary to put this in, I had seen this article on, of course, I'm towards the MCAS, not towards the park, but MCAS certainly has proven its metal, so why accept less, by Tom Birmingham, who is a well-respected educator in Massachusetts. And so I asked her to give that to all of us, just for a point of view. And I think Mrs. Broussard and myself, and Mr. Delai, and I'm not sure if you wanted to come with us, we're going to the 22nd.
I think my expectation is I'm planning on going.
Okay.
With the intent of speaking as an individual.
Oh, okay.
So.
That sounds great, all right. So that, we're still working on this, in other words, so it's interesting, but we'll see. The second thing is, we have, from the library, this is a program that's going along that did like us to. The programs at the library are just so excellent, and they're sponsored by the Friends of the Library, which is a wonderful group. We hope you all become friends. I was supposed to say that here. But anyway, the library works really hard to have variety for our students, and they've really done a great job. And I do think that the children's librarian, Ms. Rev, was at the, you work with her, Kate, at the STEM, STEM thing, and they're very open to whatever they can do to support the schools. So we thank you for anything you do on that. And did anyone have any other comment? Oh, we're going to meet on the 17th and hopefully finish up the handbook. And it worked out well that we had no new members, because the rush is kind of off. We hope that'll be done, and we'll distribute them in the fall, if that, and then, this is MJ, this is from, this is, I think these are for you. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay. We have, it's that time of year, we're opening negotiations with the superintendent for for, for her, what do we, contract, yeah, for her contract. And so this is some information about it, but, and we have, we have to decide who would like to be on that subcommittee, so I just wanted to see if anyone wants to, Mrs. Brusad does, okay?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know in previous times that we've met in an executive session, just discuss salary ranges, is this going to take the place of that, or?
You usually meet as a board.
We are, we're going to meet on the 24th, we'll meet on the 24th.
Oh, okay, as a board, and, okay.
Yes, so, but we're coming with suggestions, and the people who work with.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we'll come with suggestions and hopefully make the decision on the 24th. So if, Julie, I would be glad to do it, and we could take a third person if you want. Mrs. Blomish, okay, so it'll be the three of us to do that. And we are still working, Mrs. Brusad has the evaluation.
As a very much friendly reminder that we agreed that we would do our part by the 24th. And I will resend the electronic version of our piece, just so everyone has it and it's fresh. I sent it before, but just in case it got lost in the shuffle, I'll resend that out to everyone. But it should be fairly easy at this point, Mr. Delai has given us an awful lot of information to consider, and.
Which is actually a good thing and a bad thing, because.
It's a good thing to be a lot to consider.
Mr. Delai has given us so much to consider, it takes us hours to read through that. And then, so we can see it's going to be a very nice reaction, I'm sure. And so, and we thank Mr. Delai, and we'll do it again on the 24th of June for our first year, we'll have more to say on the 24th of June, because we have been so delighted, to say the least. And let me think, I think that's it on other reports. Any correspondence? No? And future meeting dates and agenda items, June 24th will be our final meeting for this year, and then August 20, whatever the last week in August is, we'll put it, it'll be here for the next meeting. So in August, school will have started by one day, I think, one or two days.
Actually, the week before school starts.
Oh, the week before.
August 26th.
Oh, okay.
That'd be the fourth.
Oh, because it's a late, yes.
And then we'll do this afternoon.
Right, this is late, okay. August 26th, so that will be, we'll be all set for that. All right, we all set? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Brusad.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And second, Mrs. Carroll, all those in favor? Unanimous, Kim, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, we appreciate all your hard work.